Test, 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 test. That's the heads up, we're about ready to get started here. All right. Ready, Vice Mayor? Ready? Ready? Okay. Call the meeting's order. Well, thank you all, this is certainly a very special evening. And I thank you all for coming. It's just a great moment to celebrate and remember so many things, so many things. Select a call meeting to order, regular city council meeting for the City of American Canyon for November 19, 2024. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abudalmas.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor David Oro.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
Thank you, next on the agenda is Report on Closed Session: Confirmation of Reportable Action.
Thank you. Mayor Garcia, councilmembers, and members of the public, your council convened in open session, and after ascertaining that there were no public comments on closed session items, you adjourned into closed session at 5:33 PM and concluded closed session at 6:07 PM. I will do a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with provisions of Government Code Section 54957.1B. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council?
No, sir.
Saying none, thank you. Moving on to our agenda this evening. Quite a lot of celebrations to do this evening. Thank you all for being here. Proclamation to presentation. We have proclamation honoring Councilmember Miriam Abudalmas for eight years of service.
Yes, Mayor, this evening, we actually have a couple of proclamations from a variety of folks for both yourself and for Councilmember Abudalmas, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and call them up and they can do those proclamations.
Certainly, Mr. Ollie, just indicate which ones coming up.
Alrighty. First, representing Congressman Thompson's office, Myra Ayala.
Thank you, well, I'm gonna let the congressman say a few words, as you know, he's in Washington, DC today, if not, he would have been here, you know Leon that he wouldn't.
I know.
But I do have a message from him, hopefully you do it right.
Leon, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for all that you've done to make American Canyon the wonderful place. I think that's once, I heard my name on that one. I'm not Marion. Leon, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for all that you've done to make American Canyon the wonderful place that it is. For the last two decades, you've served American Canyon with determination, passion, and great success. It's no wonder you stand as the city's longest-serving mayor. Nobody cares for American Canyon more than you, and since your days as a city council member, you've earned American Canyon's trust by always putting your community first. You've truly earned your nickname, Listener in Chief. As mayor, you've worked tirelessly to improve the quality of life for every resident. You've helped American Canyon grow from a young city into a vibrant and welcoming community. You've overseen the expansion of hundreds of new homes, attracted new businesses to the community, supported community access to the wetlands, and overseen the development of Watson Ranch. You've also been a key leader in the community's work to bring pedestrian foot traffic to American Canyon businesses off of Highway 29. I've always been proud to work with you, whether it's to expand our local post office or improve our water towers. But your commitment to service never started nor ended with your role as mayor. For 35 years, you worked as a registered nurse in support of health and well-being of our residents. We saw you bring your experience as a medical professional to your job as mayor every day, always leading with compassion and commitment to service. It's only fitting that we honor you today for that commitment. Leon, thank you for 22 great years of service to your community. Jan and I send you and Eva our best wishes as you start this next chapter. Oh, thank you.
And I do have a Congressional Record Statement, as you know Leon, this is the highest honor a member of Congress can offer a word to a constituent, and it's really well-deserving. Your over 24 years of service to American Canyon all combined, it's amazing. But I think what makes unique working with you and just being around you, and Mike mentioned it was compassion, but not only that, just your being so friendly and family-friendly. So when I thought about bringing my daughter today, I said, why not, it's American Canyon, Leon has built this community to be that, to be a family, and I want to thank you for that. I want to congratulate you, and also want to say thank you for your service to the Latino community, to the Hispanic Network, your leadership, and just know that, I know that you want to go visit your grandchildren and travel, but I know you will always be around, and thank you for your service to us. And on behalf of the Congressman, I have the Congressional Record Statement that I would like to present to you.
My appreciation and thanks to Mike Thompson, we've known each other for many, many years, and he's always had a great sense of community, we share that together.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a photo of you, so I can send it to him.
Sure.
And I'm not done, I also have a certificate for Miriam, for your eight years to the City Council, to American Canyon, and really being there for the community, and always having a, just an opportunity to listen to different people, and I really admire that, so thank you.
Thank you, Myra, and thank you Congressman Thompson. Next up, we have representatives from State Senator Dodd's office, Alex Peter and Tom Bar T., and representatives from Assemblymember Aguilar Curry's office, Tracy Crumpton.
We come bearing gifts tonight. My name is Tracy Crumpton, District Director for Majority Leader Cecilia Aguilar Curry, and we are thrilled to be here to celebrate and honor Mayor Garcia. You have been such an advocate, an ally, and such an incredible ambassador for the City of American Canyon and Napa County. I know that all of my former bosses have loved working with you, from Norine Evans to Senator Wolk, to Majority Leader Aguilar Curry, and you've always been somebody that we could go to, you have the fingers on the pulse, you know this community so very well. So on behalf of my boss, we certainly want to present to you a state resolution, both signed by myself, or not myself, but by my boss, and then Senator Bill Dodd, and I'll let Alex and Tom Bar T. say a few words.
Just here to, you know, really just say congratulations, thank you Leon, 22 years, that's a really long time, that's a generation, and there's not very many, that's almost two-thirds of the city's life, there's not very many people that get to have that kind of impact on a city, on a community, you know, you weren't the first mayor, but your mark will definitely be felt for generations to come, and just really want to say thank you and honor you, one thing that Senator Dodd always says is, as just a token of, you always want to leave the place better than you founded, and you definitely did that, so thank you, congratulations Leon.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. It's great to be here, as I also stand before you prepare to retire in five days. And of course, I can't even compare to your level of service, the fabulous record you have as a public servant, as an elected official, having worked with you as the council member and vice mayor in the City of Vallejo, served on numerous committees together, I consider you more than just a peer, but also a very close friend, and I just want to wish you the best in retirement, and I know you may consider running for council again in a couple of years, but, but anyway, sincerely, I really appreciated knowing you, and still will, hopefully in the future, and look forward to working together with you and your wife in other endeavors in the community. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
So Mayor, come on down. Okay, Miriam, it's your turn now. So we also have a joint certificate signed by both the Majority Leader and the State Senator, recognizing, acknowledging, and thanking you for your years of service to American Canyon City Council. I've known and worked with you for several years beforehand, I believe you were an intern for Norine Evans back in the day.
I was, you were with me when I was 19.
I know, I know, that's quite some time, that's how we've aged, but just really want to go ahead and thank you for your years of service, thank you.
Congratulations, Miriam. Thank you, Alex, Tom, and Tracy, and send your thanks to your bosses as well for us, thank you. We also now have, actually, a representative from Cal Cities, our friend Nancy Hall Bennett is joining in by Zoom here.
Nancy, go ahead, if you could unmute, please.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Need a little more volume?
A little, check your volume a little bit, you're a little bit quiet.
Oh, I apologize, I hope you can hear me better.
We're good now.
Better.
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry that I'm unable to be here tonight, I'm grateful to the City Manager, Jason Holly, for allowing me the opportunity to join you this way, as an injury is preventing me from being in person. I look forward to seeing both Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Abudalmas soon for a hug and to properly present to you with treats and a resolution, but for tonight, I want to say a couple words. First, about my friend Miriam. Tonight, we honor your eight years of service to the City of American Canyon, but I briefly want to honor your service to the city and beyond. Many are aware that this past year, Councilmember Abudalmas served as President of the North Bay Division for Cal Cities. In this leadership role for all cities of Marin, Sonoma, Napa, and Solano Counties, she served as a collaborative and warm leader, bringing and uplifting her neighboring cities to share their talents, to learn and empower each other as mayors and council member colleagues that all wanted to do their best for the residents. She did so in many ways, but I have two quick examples that I'd like to point out. As Vice President in 2023, she was very eager to invite all members of the Division to show off and tour Watson Ranch. We enjoyed a beautiful day in American Canyon and learned about the development, and especially a proud point of hers, and I know the mayor's touring Leemos Point. Members still talk about it, and we're so grateful to her and the whole city's hospitality as usual. This year, at our annual conference, Councilmember Abudalmas represented all cities at our Resolutions Committee, which vets and recommends proposed policies to the entire state membership. Here's where she showed off, in her collaborative efforts in front of the whole state, on how best to move forward on a proposed resolution towards the goal of better collaboration between state and local government. She did so by building off of her own experiences, and you just saw this with the resolutions she received from her state senator and state assembly member. She showed by example, and as always, she did so with grace. I know the citizens of American Canyon benefited from her collaboration with Cal Cities, and I know for certain that Cal Cities is better because of her leadership. Thank you, Councilmember and friend.
Thank you, Nancy.
And now for the mayor. After 22 years of service to American Canyon and to Cal Cities, I want to briefly honor you as well, and your reach well beyond the city. In 2016, you served as Division President. You've been a member of a state policy committee for Cal Cities which drives our policies for over 15 years. When I started at Cal Cities just 14 years ago, you were one of the most welcoming, kind, and always gentleman, and eager to engage. Mayor Garcia knows the power of knowing your neighbor, and because of that, he's always shown up. He's never missed a meeting, in fact, he's usually the first one at every meeting we've ever hosted, and he's often the last one to leave, and he does so because he wants to make sure he connects with everyone. Everybody knows who the mayor of American Canyon is, and everyone knows they have a friend there. He's always done so by also encouraging council colleagues to join, always eager to get more American Canyon representation involved with Cal Cities. And his true mark of leadership, and no surprise to me, is his mentorship, not just towards me, but how he's lifted others up around him, just as Miriam Abudalmas served as President last year at his encouragement. For 22 years, you've served with grace and humility, and as a friend, and we're grateful to you. I hope you enjoy this next chapter and this well-deserved retirement, and I look forward to seeing you both so soon.
Thank you, Nancy, it's just, it's always been a great opportunity to work with you, you're very close to community, and you are very good at making folks feel welcome and engaged in whatever issue it is we're having to raise, no matter how difficult it is, we work together, and I just appreciate your leadership in that area, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Mayor, we have one more speaker, this is from the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, Valerie Zizek-Morays.
Hello, and congratulations, Leon, for your years of service. Our Chamber of Commerce and our community could not be more grateful to have you as our mayor, you show up all the time, you always show up with a smile, you support our community, and you support the events, but most often, the thing that goes unlooked and not seen is your support for our business community, and, you know, there's a lot of concerns, and there's a lot of questions, but there's a lot of great moments that we've shared with our business community, and lots of ribbons that have been cut in this community. I wish I had the tally of the amount of ribbons that Mayor Leon Garcia has cut, because I know under my time in the last four and a half years, we're close to almost 75 ribbons that we've cut, so the numbers just go on and on, and in 22 years of service, you have to be over 1,000 ribbons cut, so not only do you show up, you show up with a smile, you shake everybody's hand, you're thankful to be there, and we're thankful to have you, and there is never a time that I show up anywhere throughout Napa Valley that I do not hear what a great, wonderful mayor we have, that's friendly, that's welcoming, and it is what we want American Canyon to be seen as, is friendly and welcoming, so thank you for being that face of our community, for helping develop the greatness we have here, and for always being an advocate for business and supporting what's right for American Canyon. So thank you very much for everything you've done for us, Leon, we're definitely going to miss you at coffee chats, but I just want to make an announcement that on the 4th Thursday in January, we're going to be having our first coffee chat of the year, we're going to be honoring Mayor Leon Garcia, we want everybody to come out, have coffee, tell him all the kind words, and we want to make that a special event for you, so that will be the 4th Thursday of January, and that coffee chat's going to be dedicated to Mayor Leon Garcia for all of his service and for all the years of supporting the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce and Business Community, so thank you for that, and I'm looking forward to having Leon come in, or, sorry, Leon, Pierre Washington come in and take your place, but nobody can ever replace you, Leon Garcia, you have a place in our heart, and I'd also like to dedicate an honorary chamber membership to you for all of your years of service for our community, we want to make you our first honorary chamber member mayor, and we hope that you continue to show up and support our community as you have for all these years. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, where there's coffee, I'll be there. Very good, thank you.
That's all of our speakers now, Mayor, I think we can get to item three.
Proclamation to presentation, yes. City of American Canyon proclamation, honoring Councilmember Miriam Abudalmas for eight years of dedicated service to the City of American Canyon. Whereas, Miriam Abudalmas has demonstrated outstanding leadership and dedication to the community as a member of the American Canyon City Council, tirelessly working to improve the quality of life for all residents of American Canyon. And whereas, Councilmember Abudalmas has consistently advocated for equity, sustainability, inclusivity, championing the values of diversity, and ensuring that all voices within our community are heard and valued, including her efforts to recognize the Muslim holiday of Ramadan, and her support for the American Canyon Doonteen celebration. And whereas, Councilmember Abudalmas has worked diligently on initiatives to enhance economic development, environmental stewardship, and community well-being, strengthening the city's commitment to a thriving and resilient future, which has included the prohibition of new fossil fuel stations, and the restriction of smoking in apartments, thank you. And whereas her contribution to local policy, community outreach, public service has positively impacted the lives of countless residents, inspiring others with their unwavering dedication to public service. And whereas, Councilmember Abudalmas is a committed advocate for youth engagement, affordable housing, public safety, and environmental sustainability, aligning her efforts with the needs and aspirations of the people she serves. And whereas, her commitment to transparency, community engagement, and collaboration with fellow council members has earned her the respect and admiration of her colleagues, city staff, and the citizens of American Canyon. Now therefore, I, Mayor Leon Garcia, on behalf of the City Council and the people of American Canyon, do hereby recognize and commend Councilmember Miriam Abudalmas for her extraordinary service, leadership, and dedication to the betterment of our community. Her tireless efforts are deeply appreciated, and we are grateful for the positive impact she has made in our city. We extend our heartfelt thanks for her continued service and commitment to the residents of American Canyon. Thank you.
Councilmember, on behalf of the employees of the City of American Canyon, we wanted to provide this gift to you, it's pragmatic, because we don't need it anymore, but we know you'll cherish it. On the back, we've got many, many of the signatures of our employees, and we also wanted to have a little gift for Farah and for Hani. Wanted to come up here and take some photos with the family, yeah?
So everybody knows, that's my brother, my baby brother, I always call him my baby brother because he's called me. He will come take a picture sometime in Maritza. He will come take a picture sometime in Maritza. I was taking the picture.
These things always make me want to cry. First and foremost, I wanted to thank everybody in this room for being here this evening. It's a special night, not just for me, but for our Mayor Leon Garcia. Eight years sounds like nothing compared to 22. To be fair, I did start volunteering with the city at 13 years old.
You should count that.
And I only say that as a caveat, because I've been involved with the city since I was old enough to understand what it meant to be involved and volunteer. And so I may be finishing my time here on the City Council, but I'm definitely not going anywhere. I just wanted to take some time to be with my beautiful children that you guys all saw, and I think they deserve a little bit of time with their mom. But serving this community has been the greatest honor of my life. I've grown up in American Canyon, everybody here knows that. I've been here since I was two years old. And people I went to high school with call me Miss American Canyon, because they know how much I love this place. So I've been saying this a lot lately. This is a very bittersweet moment for me. I am very excited for the next chapter of my life with my family, and I'm sure I'll find someplace to be in this community still moving forward. But it's also very sad to be leaving the City Council. That being said, I also wanted to thank my council colleagues. We've been together for a while, we've been through a lot. You guys have seen some of our quarrels, and you guys know that we don't always get along, but you don't always see what we do have going on with one another behind the scenes. And we do have great relationships, and I respect every single one of you, and I appreciate your commitment to public service. You guys, this job is not easy, and it often feels thankless. And so anybody you know who's in public service, I hope you guys appreciate them and you thank them every once in a while. I think the people in the room understand that. But there are, you know. So thank you so much, you guys, for all of your support and mentorship and your leadership and your commitment to service. Thank you, all of you, for your dedication and hard work to this community, for being here, for supporting us, for supporting your council, for supporting the City of American Canyon. You guys are the backbone of this community. And we always talk about the diversity here. This is a very diverse town, and you guys are what make this community so great. So thank you so much.
There's one more proclamation, Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm going to ask your colleagues to read that, if you wouldn't mind.
So, yeah, so Mayor Garcia, it would be weird for you to read your own proclamation about yourself.
That would be awkward, yes.
So I'm going to ask my council colleagues. We're going to go through this. I'll start it off. I'll read the first two paragraphs, and there's sections here that you get to read three more, and it'll come out evenly. Mark, it's going to end with you, okay?
Okay.
All right, let's see if we can do this, all right?
All right.
I read two, you read three. All right, here we go. City of American Canyon proclamation. Honoring Mayor Leon Garcia for 22 years of leadership and service to the City of American Canyon. Whereas Mayor Leon Garcia began his journey in American Canyon in the year 2000, quickly becoming an integral part of the community he now calls home. And whereas on December 5, 2002, Garcia was sworn in as City Councilmember for a four-year term, marking the beginning of his long and impactful public service to American Canyon. And?
Whereas on December 7, 2006, Garcia became the city's first directly elected mayor, and what began as a two-year term evolved into a historic tenure as he continued to earn the trust of the community through reelections in 2008, 2010, 2012, 2016, and 2020, making him the longest-serving mayor in American Canyon's history. And whereas Mayor Garcia's 22 years of service, including 19 years as mayor, are marked by his steadfast dedication to the community and his ability to foster trust and unity among residents. And?
Whereas Mayor Garcia has been a passionate advocate for the city's Broadway District Specific Plan, which has transformed the vision of American Canyon by transitioning Highway 29 from an auto-oriented area to a pedestrian-friendly town center since 2017. And whereas Mayor Garcia's leadership, the city has expanded public amenities, including accessibility to the wetlands, trails, access, providing spaces for residents to connect with nature and each other. And?
You got one more.
I think you have one more.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you got one more, Pierre.
And Mayor Garcia has represented American Canyon on various local, regional, and statewide boards, such as the Navy Val-- the Navy, the Napa Valley Waste Management Authority, the Napa County Flood and Water Conservation District, Napa Valley Transportation Authority, and the League of California Cities North Bay Division, ensuring that the community's voice is heard across the state. Now, and?
And whereas Mayor Garcia's volunteerism includes contributions to organizations such as Community Action of Napa Valley, Kiwanis Club of American Canyon, and the Community Emergency Response Team, reflecting his deep commitment to community safety and well-being. And whereas prior to his public service career, Mayor Garcia dedicated 35 years to the medical field as a registered nurse, serving Napa State Hospital and Yountville Veterans Home, where his compassion and commitment to helping others became core to his leadership style. And whereas Mayor Garcia is a family man, sharing his life and passion for service with his wife Ava, their six adult children, and three beloved grandchildren. And?
Now therefore, the City Council of American Canyon hereby honors Mayor Leon Garcia for his 22 years of extraordinary service to American Canyon, his leadership, dedication, and the lasting impact he has made on the city and its future. And express our sincere gratitude to Mayor Garcia for his selfless dedication, commend his achievements, and wish him continued success and happiness in all future endeavors. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Garcia, on behalf of the employees of the City of American Canyon, we also wanted to present this to you. It's equally pragmatic and signed by many of the staff. And Ava, these are for you. Come on up.
You guys, my husband and I are always having this struggle at home. He wants a huge picture of himself framed and put right in our living room. And I always tell him that that's not cool, that's weird. But now I guess I got mine first, so.
Mayor, we do have refreshments in the lobby. We thought maybe it would be appropriate to change for a few moments.
Give me a moment for a few comments reflect. You know, I'm truly honored this evening. It means so much to me. But it was, I'm just thinking back on moments we had. Got a telephone call today from Rich Ramirez. He was our city manager many, many years ago. This whole upper floor was empty. Actually, I think he had found that the owner of the building was moving on, and so we had an opportunity to purchase it. But a lot of you, longtime residents here as well, remember when across the street was a cow pasture, 40 acres that was empty. All the houses that we built, the new school that we built, the high school that we built. Finally, one of the biggest gatherings we had in the city was when that high school opened up, and that parking lot was just jammed full of people. As everybody remembers, well, taking that bus, 6:30 in the morning or earlier to get up and catch the bus. And if you were here before the middle school was built, you had to get up early and take a bus to Celrotto Middle School. So, yeah, city's gone a lot. My first experience in American Canyon, I got my van, moving van, full of my furniture, and I'm going down Real Del Mar by the 7-Eleven. School bus stops, all right, so I stop. Four boys get out of that bus with a football. One's white, one's black, one's Asian, one's Latino. I'm home. That's the beauty of the city. It is so diverse, and there's so much respect for each other and caring. People look out for their neighbors here. And that's the quality that this city has had since long before incorporation. You know, it's kind of an isolated little town, Napa County. We have one police officer who might be in Lake Barriessa when you need a call. But what's that mean? You and me, neighbor, we got to take care of each other. So it's beautiful, and I think our aspirations are totally there. You know, this council has done remarkable things. And it's all about us working as a team to get it done. And no, it's not all hunky-dory, and we do have our disagreements. But that's just part of the process. And then you learn from that, says, okay, we can make this work. We can make this a better place. We can achieve our aspirations for American Canyon. Yes, we can. And that's all of us together, all of us, not just us up here at the diat. So I appreciate the evening. There's a part of me that's going to miss it. There's a part of me that says, you know, the quality of leadership is that which we invest in and develop from the ground up. It truly is, and that's how we work together. And that should be our mantra. When I'm kind of stuck and not terribly happy with the way things are going, I just remember, you know, persist. We got to work together. We have got to work together to achieve our goals for this city. And I will spend time, my partner in life. I'm going to get emotional. We have three grandsons, two are in New York, and one just had his third birthday yesterday. And so now we're going to get to go travel some more. Like I said, nobody wants to travel with a kid in diapers, right? I've done that. So, yeah, we'll do it. So I thank you all, I appreciate all of you being here this evening to recognize those of us who serve. And all council members deserve that respect as well. It's not an easy job, but it can be extremely satisfying when you see what we can accomplish. Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens is going to be an incredible branding of American Canyon, and more to come, more to come. So thank you, let's have some refreshments a little bit.
Oh, wait, Leon, you got to allow people to say a few words to you, at least your colleagues. Well, I, for one, would love to express my gratitude. I'd mentioned that I'd known Tracy since I was 19 years old, and she mentioned that I used to intern for Noreen Evans. Well, who got me that internship? That would be our mayor, Leon Garcia. We go way back in his-- I even remember when you first ran for city council. I think I was working at Napa Valley College at the time, and there was an event, like this fancy dinner. It was my first fancy dinner, hosted by the trustees. Do you remember that? Way back in 2000, it was a long time ago. But I remember being there, or it was probably 2005 or '06. So not when you first ran for city council, when you ran for something. And we had your sign in our yard, and-- We've crossed paths many, 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 many times before I even became a city council member, and that just is a testament to your commitment to this community. And your mark is definitely, you're leaving a big mark on this city, a huge mark on this city. And so I just wanted to thank you for your service, Mayor, and your mentorship and your leadership.
Thank you. And I didn't do it alone. Have a lot of council colleagues to thank for that process, to get there. Yeah, but thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as long as we're talking about reminiscence and all that, I remember, I guess it was in 2000, I was city manager, and I met you for the first time, and we chatted, and I went away thinking, you know, here's somebody that is going to be engaged in the community, is probably going to run for council, could be a great asset. And sure enough, you were. And I appreciate all the years that you've been on the council, you know, working with you as a city manager, and then working as a colleague and in between. I'm going to miss you as mayor. After 19 years, it's hard to imagine anybody else. Even if that is the case, when I run into you on the street, I'm probably still going to call you Mr. Mayor. Leon, thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, Leon, I'll go next. I met you for the first time in 2018. Before that, all I saw was Garcia signs in the streets when I got here. So, but it was that night where you sat there and you told me that you saw something in me. And, you know, I listened to you, and I've been listening to you ever since. I like the way that you are or have been a great ambassador for our city. You know, you, they've said it several times, everybody that spoke tonight, is that when you think of American Canyon, the first person they think of is you. Okay? You've been there for me on my days where I wanted to quit, and you've been there on good days for me. So I just want to say between you and Ava, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the investment that you placed into me. And you will see that there is a return on that investment soon. So thank you for all you've done for me.
Thank you.
So everybody's telling their first-time stories. You want to hear mine? This is a good one, Leon.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah. It was a hot day in American Canyon. I'd been a citizen here for about a year and a half. And it involved a sign, a campaign sign, and you knocked on my door. And you said, can I put a sign up? And, but what people didn't know, it was hot. I rolled out in my shorts, totally topless, just hanging out, full belly, and I'm like, yeah, dude, whatever, go away. It's hot. And little did I know, I'd be sitting next to you for the last seven and a half years here and seeing you around. So thank you for your service, and thank you for being who you are to our community.
Thank you. Well, we ready for a little break? We should reconvene, say what works, Mr. Holly. 7:30? All right, yeah, we'll-- We'll adjourn for recess till 7:30, mas o menos, so put it that way. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, folks, please take a seat. I know, I love a celebration. I could go on all night long, and have. But, you know, with respect to those who have an interest in business items this evening, let's get started. Oop, I'm losing folks again. Oh, thank you, yes. Councilmember Abudalmas. Oh, okay. Councilmember Washington. Well, thank you all for, uh, the celebration this evening and, uh, being here to, uh, to celebrate with us. Okay, council, ready to convene?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Move on to, uh, public comment now. Uh, it's right after item number four. Uh, item's not on the closed session or open session of agenda, so anything that we're not gonna discuss this evening later in the agenda, please come up and comment.
Yvonne McGintzke.
Hey, you have three minutes. You have cards?
I do, I have them. Congratulations. I knew Mayor Garcia when he was in leadership Napa Valley, he was on the committee at Hands Across the Valley. We worked together before you were mayor, before you here. Yeah?
That was, we were in class six together.
That's right, we were very young.
Yeah, current class is thirty-seven.[694.23][694.23](Laughter).
That's right, that's right. Um, I'm here today because I wanted to share with you, um, so, a, a very rare sighting that we had recently here in the wetlands, and that is the burrowing owl. I believe I sent you all pictures of the burrowing owl that they saw down in the wetlands, and that was the second sighting this year. There was an earlier sighting in March, and then there was one just last week. And those were, uh, pictures were made by the Audubon Society, Ashley Board of Directors of the Audubon Society. And the reason why that's such an important picture is there have been no sightings of burrowing owls in this community since two thousand twenty. And before that, there was only a couple of birds sighted back in two thousand and eighteen. I was talking to one of the council members who mentioned that there might have been another sighting in Sassoon. And my, my point is, there are very, very few burrowing owls left, and American Canyon just happens to be one of the places where they are. Now, burrowing owls live in the holes that are made by those ground squirrels when you walk along the wetlands edge. I have a sour in my mouth, this is, this is getting hard to talk. The point being that you need the ground squirrels because they make the holes that the burrowing owls are in. California Department of Fish and Wildlife is now going to make that an endangered species, it's up for review, and that's gonna make, that's gonna make a difference in this community regarding development and conservation. And so what I would like to propose is that this community take a second look at habitat conservation plans, so you know where to find critical habitat for these animals. We talked about American Canyon not being able to have its own plan, however, Napa County is pursuing something, and it'd be nice if the county and the city could work together. I would encourage you to do that, so we can protect the burrowing owls and the other birds that are available in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to, I'd like to, uh, congratulate Leon.[842.12][842.12](Laughter).
Fran, IT is coming to help you just a minute.
I can get up.[848.12][848.12](Laughter). First of all, I'd like to congratulate you, and I remember sitting in the old recreation building, and I told Leon, I, he was there too, and I said, you ought to run for city council. So, uh, he did.
Thank you for your advice.[867.43][867.43](Laughter).
And so you've done a good job. And to Yvonne, I have two barn owls in my, uh, at my tree somewhere that I've had for years, and I don't know what the difference is between a, a barn animal and the kind that you said, but, uh, from my understanding, owls, where they're born is where they stay. So anyway, congratulations to Miriam too. Thank you.
Thank you.[896.20][896.20](Applause). Next speaker, please.
I have no other speaker cards and no hands raised online at this time.
And nobody else in the audience wanting to comment at this time? Very good, we'll close public comment this time and move on to agenda changes. We have the consent calendar, if there are no item being pulled for discussion, I'll accept a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second. Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember, or sorry, Vice Mayor David Oro.
Yes.
And Mayor Leon Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. Moving now to public hearings, Watson Ranch specific plan, Lot Seven tentative subdivision
There you go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. My name is William He with the Planning Vision Division and very happy to be here today to give a presentation on the Watson Ranch Lot Seven subdivision map. To begin, I wanna orient everybody with where the location is for Lot Seven. The project is with, consists of approximately twelve acres in a, kind of like a L-shaped parcel on the west side of Marcus Road. To the north is a vacant parcel, to the west is the Union Pacific Railroad and the backside of Walmart. And to the east, we have the Harvest subdivision as well as a parcel for the future park within Watson Ranch. And lastly, to the south, we have the Lemus Point Apartments. Here's a site plan for the project. The project consists of a hundred and thirty-six single-family homes, and the main access is from Marcus Road, and there's also a EVA, emergency vehicle access that's from the south side that connects with, uh, an entry close to the Lemus Point Apartments. Here's a project description of the, of the Lot Seven project, twelve-point-eight acres within the medium-density residential parcel, uh, zone. A hundred and thirty-six two-story homes, there's two different types of homes within this project. Sixty-six are alleyway homes and seventy are our traditional homes. Um, the, the subdivision includes four new streets, two private alleys, and seven private drives. The architecture typed includes craftsman, prairie, farmhouse, ranch, and traditional styles. The architecture, uh, has all been, uh, approved or in the planning commission meeting that was completed in October. Here's a, um, a, a site plan that includes, um, the roads and the alleyways that I, I mentioned. The four streets in yellow are shown, the four, um, public streets are shown in yellow, and then the orange shows the two private alleyway, and then we have the, uh, the seven private drives shown in green. We have some updated photos, uh, from the applicant, uh, with the site. The top photo is a, uh, a view from the northeast corner looking southwest, and in that distance, you can see the Lemus Point Apartments on the left side, and then on the right side, you see parts of the, uh, Union Pacific Railroad. The photo on the bottom is a view from the southeast corner looking northwest, uh, vacant sites in the north. Then we have a updated photo, uh, perspective is from the northeast corner of the site looking south. And from there, you see that, uh, Marcus Road is, uh, is, is being completed towards northwards, and then Lemus Point is, Apartments is in the distance. We also have a aerial photo of the site. Currently, it, uh, they did, uh, obtain a grading permit for the preliminary grading of the site, and there it is shown, it within the red marker. There's only one specific issue for the project, um, the other architectural issues have all been resolved in the design permits, so we're only gonna talk about one issue today, and that's the off-street bicycle trail. The off-street bicycle trail, the applicant, uh, in accordance with the Watson Ranch specific plan, was to place it, uh, adjacent to the railroads, which is shown in the, uh, the blue line here on the, on the bottom. However, um, as the, we began reviewing the project with the applicant, they found out that the grade, the grade separation, uh, is, uh, very steep along the, um, railroad line to the west here. And so their proposal is to have the bike trail, um, a little offset where it's gonna be, um, uh, shown in this yellow dashed line here.
Excuse me, so the, uh, the blue lines indicate bicycle trail?
The blue line is the proposed bicycle trail in the specific plan, plan, yes. And then the, the new, the new proposal is shown in this orange here. So they're still gonna have a bike trail, it's just a little bit offset from what they previously approved. And I'll, I'll show you a close-up. So here is the proposed configuration of the bicycle trails. There will still be a bicycle trail along Marcus Road, but the, the new proposal will have the bike enter, uh, on the south side, and then it makes a right turn, uh, along the EVA, and it continues onto Street D, and then it makes another right, uh, along the north side of the, of the site property lines, and then it comes back out to the Marcus Road. This new bike trail complies with, um, Public Works, uh, and the Watson Ranch specific plan standards, and, um, that's, that's the only, uh, specific issue. Public outreach, uh, there's been a slew of public outreach efforts, um, I don't wanna go through them all, but the comments that were received were replied to during the planning commission meeting, and then there were no new comments since the planning commission Seek for determination, the project is consistent with the certified Watson Ranch specific plan and final environmental impact report. It also complies with the Watson Ranch specific plan design guidelines and the mitigation measures, and, uh, with that, staff's recommendation is approval of the Watson Ranch Lot Seven vesting tentative subdivision map. The applicant team is here, along with their engineer, and the, uh, the property owner is also here too. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions from councilmember?
Just a clarification, staff's recommendation is including that adjusted bike trail alignment, that's what I wanted.
Any other questions from, uh?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, well, we declare the public hearing on this matter open now. If the public who wish to like to comment.
We, I have no, uh, comment cards for this item and no hands raised online.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, Kenneth Lee, resident of American Canyon. Uh, my question is, what class of bike lanes will these be?
Not specific class, but I'll give you some facts. It's a multi-use per the specific plan.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilmembers.
Evening.
Mayor, just, I wanna pause for a second and digress, wanted to thank you for your twenty-two years of service. Mark was city manager when I came here, and you were not yet on the council.[1527.01][1527.01](Laughter). And I was thinking about, uh, your comment about the different milestones and where the city was at that moment in time, where the city was when it was incorporated and where it is today. And it's a pretty incredible, uh, juxtaposition from where it was in two thousand and six, when you first sat in that, that seat, to where it is today in, in two thousand twenty-four. And, um, you know, it's, it's tireless service, it's selfless service. And I can't even imagine, you know, the number of nights and, and ribbon-cutting ceremonies, and, uh, it comes from the heart, because it certainly doesn't come from, from, you know, somebody paying you an enormous salary to do that. So, thank you very much, and Miriam, same, she's not here right now, but also for her eight years of service. So, quickly on this issue, on the, on the bike path, it is a multi-use, I believe it's two feet of shoulder, eight feet of bike path, two feet of shoulder. And as William was pointing out, the reason why it was moved, so that site, we moved eleven thousand dump truck loads from Oak Hill, they had excess dirt, so we took eleven thousand truckloads onto that site. And things you don't see on a vesting tentative map or a site plan or specific plans as topography. So, that site, so Marcus is now extended, they would have paved this week, but because of the rain coming, we're not gonna pave Marcus to the wetlands. But everything's done, the curb, the curb cuts are in, all the concrete, um, sidewalks, the edges of them are, are there, they're ready to be poured as well. But that site sat approximately, I think, somewhere between eight to ten feet below where Marcus is, below where that railroad tracks is. So the, the real issue, as William said, the, the elevation changed today from where it was, um, on the specific plan is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to ten feet. There's just, you couldn't put a, you would never put a bike path down there below the, uh, below the, the project next to the railroad tracks, so that's the real reason behind it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, uh, my name's Kyle Siegel, I'm with KB Homes. Uh, thanks, councilmembers, and congratulations to the mayor here.
Thank you.
We're coming on this, uh, very historic day for us. Um, but, uh, just wanna touch a couple of things, uh, working with Terry here as well, um, you know, as he mentioned, we changed it due to site issues. I'd also wanna point out if, I don't know if there's a site plan, but we're also widening and paving kind of that EVA to also make it to, I think, up to twenty feet in some areas, so, and I think we're really trying to make a, a benefit of that. But just wanted to kind of quickly talk about who we are. I mean, we're a national home builder, uh, you know, based in LA. We are locally here in this office, we're not far away, you know, our office is in Green Valley, we employ about a hundred people here locally, across eighteen divisions, um, you know, and so a lot of people, myself included, are in neighboring counties and kind of in the Napa County here, area here as well. Um, you know, KB's definitely focused on customer service, trying to deliver maximum value, kind of allowing home buyers to choose their vision for the home and trying to drive value in neighborhoods and for residents, you know, wherever we can. So that's kind of the customer-obsessed, you know, um, also focusing on sustainability, energy efficiency. We're one of, um, on Newsweek's list of most America's responsible companies, you know, an honor we've held for the last four years running, more than any other national home builder. So, you know, with this site specifically, we really took that to mind, we worked with, with Terry and CBG, the engineer, to really come up with something specific and unique to the site. You know, we designed kind of the two product lines, alley loads off the main to kind of focus with the garage, or not, excuse me, the opposite, uh, living-forward vision off the Marcus Road, you know, and, and designing architecture specific to the site. So, you know, we, we really tried to focus on bold colors, you know, um, kind of that wine country flavor, to meet the standards of the specific plan and the city of American Canyon. So, a lot of thought went into the site plan, went into the architecture to kind of pull it all together, um, and hopefully deliver something we can be proud of and, and, um, serve the city well. And then we just wanna note a couple of things, you know, we, we, in that effort too, we also... we also wanted to drive density. So, I mean, we're getting a, you know, for a single-family detached product, we're, I think, just north of 12 units of the acre, which is fantastic, you know, allows more homes for residents here, you know, allows us to build slightly smaller homes, smaller lots, delivering a more affordable price point while still maintaining kind of that high standard that I think we've, you know, achieved here with this site. So just wanted to note a couple of those things, you know, we're really looking forward to being a part of the American Canyon community, you know, the ruins and gardens is going to be a huge jewel of the city, Watson Ranch specific plan in general. So, you know, we're very excited to be a part of it with this community here and hopefully more to come. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. There are no other speakers? Nobody showing up online?
I have no one online.
Very good. If there are no speakers on this matter from the public, they will close the public comment this time, return to council for further discussion, desired action.
There's no further discussion. I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order, a resolution approving a vesting tentative subdivision map for Watson Ranch Lot 7 to create 136 single-family home lots on 12.86 acres within the Watson Ranch specific plan, medium-density residential, 16 zoning district located west of Marcus Road, Accesso's parcel number 059-430-045, file number PL24-0012.
I'll second that. Motion second. Mr. Ross, I had a question I wanted to raise before we made that motion. Appropriate now? Cozy developer speak on energy conservation. Councilmember Joseph and I sit on the Climate Action Committee and wanting to know what who's the can someone please address the energy conservation issues? For example, California is all aware is going all-electric, you know, by as of 2035, I believe, you can no longer get a gas-powered water heater, et cetera. Could you speak to those amenities?
Sure. You're correct. I mean, in some, historically, there's been a lot of gas and electric. In this site specifically, it'll be an all-electric subdivision here, you know, energy-efficient appliances, you know, water-conserving fixtures. We do solar in all of our homes as well. So I think, you know, those are kind of the main item points. Also, you know, insulation and things like that to make sure we're meeting, you know, all the energy efficiency requirements provided is kind of the the
Thank you.
Efficiency we achieve.
I just want to make sure that the public had an opportunity to hear that.
Mr. Mayor, as as long as you brought that up, because I was going to ask a question related, so I figure I'll just stick my nose in this one. I appreciate the solar panels. Is it are the homes wired so that all you need to do is buy a battery if you wanted to have battery backup? Is that being configured in even as an option?
I I think that, yeah, I was looking over at our division president here who's telling me, yes, so that is the case.
Okay, great. That is, for those of you who don't know, that's my pet peeve. Solar is great, but without the battery backup, you're not addressing the peak demands and and saving real money, so.
It is wired.
Okay. Wired is good, and then theoretically, the homeowner can just buy their battery and have it plugged in. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate the very forward-looking approach to building construction that we need, well, the remainder of the 21st century here. But thank you. We'll be happy to report that to the Climate Action Committee at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Okay, moving on, item 17, public hearing, SDG 2020 Warehouse, EIR, and CUP.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council and the members of the public. William Hee here again for the SDG Commerce Distribution Center project. I'm the project planner from the city side, but the applicant's team has a presentation, and I'll let them take it away.
Thank you, William. Neil Thompson, representing SDG Commerce 220 LLC, also Stromiski Development Group. Interesting, I didn't I didn't write it this way, but it works out this way because we're talking about walking down memory lanes, right? Well, I started thinking about what we've been, and this is our 12th project here in American Canyon, dating back to 1995 with Mazetta Foods. Some of you weren't around, but I know Brandon was. That was 30 years ago. Since then, we've constructed over two and a half million square feet in American Canyon of refrigerated food-grade warehouses and buildings, not including almost another million square feet, not in the city, but within the city's fire district and or water district. So we've been around. We have some great diverse businesses and employment bases that we've generated now in these 12 facilities. Got Hess Collection Winery, Mum Champagne, Berry Calibro Chocolate, Infiduc Bottling, wine distributors like Wine Direct and Filment, Last Bottle, added operations, Vinpack, G3 Enterprises, specialized operations for Harlan Wines, Wasse Collection, and we have long-term storage for over 1,000 West Coast wineries in Valley Wine Warehouse and Western Wine. Because we own more than 60% of what we've built, we go to the we 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 know what the market is, we know what works for us, works for the city, works for the tenants, and we've we deal with everyday issues because we own some of our tenants. So we deal with them, the workforce availability, housing, traffic congestion, commute times, places to eat, et cetera. With a 30-year track record here, we've we've learned what works for the market and works what what works for the city. And this project is no different than the rest of them. This is an infill lot sandwiched between two existing buildings that are similar size, similar characteristics. The construction of the road and the parcelization of that area has undergone the full environmental and procedural approvals of the planning commission and the city this city council. Why, then, you might ask, why is this project going through this CEQA EIR hearing process? And that's a very reasonable question. Although the project is, in all respects, very similar to all of our projects that have come before you in the past 30 years, some of the applicable review regulations that are imposed by the state of California have continued to change. In this instance, the state has recently changed how employee traffic impacts are to be calculated. In our latest two projects that are on either side of this existing, this proposed project, we were able to mitigate the VMT impacts by constructing a bike path connection that provided for non-vehicle travel from Vallejo through Green Island Industrial District, all the way to City of Napa and beyond. But the new state review criteria, nothing short of a public transportation system within the Green Island Industrial District will satisfy the criteria. So consequently, this project has to go through through an EIR process, but the buildings has not changed, and the site has not changed, only the review process. So continuing down memory lane again, back in 1995, this area was called The Grove, which elicits lots of, yeah, interesting thoughts. It was initially planted with non-native Australian eucalyptus trees, probably about a century ago, by someone hoping to market them for lumber. Unfortunately, eucalyptus wood is very difficult to mill into lumber, and the oils in the tree inhibit the growth of most, if not all, plant material under them, thus destroying the native plant material that was there before and might have been able to continue. But without that, with those oils, they won't grow. In order to remediate some hazardous waste from being released into the ground, in 19, in 2012, the Superior Court ordered that a portion of The Grove be removed and cleaned up, and that was undertaken by a previous owner. About seven years later, in 2019, we purchased that cleared property as a single parcel and embarked on an environmental review of the full 35 acres for the development of the Commerce 330. Two years later, going through that, we embarked on the Commerce 217 at the north end and went through that same process with the planning commission and city council. With each project, the measures and mitigation measures were required and followed for such environmental issues as nesting bird surveys, burrowing owl surveys, frog surveys, et cetera. And this project was the same conditions of approval and mitigation measures imposed These are some slides that are also copied in in your packet. It shows existing site, the building on the north is the 217, the one on the right, and the site is on the left. This is on the south side, looking towards the northwest. The site plan, the building design and colors are in keeping with the other two buildings, the existing ones. And these are some of the highlights that are also in in your packet. Speaking of energy-saving features, I'll bring up Mark. We did put solar on in the last project, and this will continue on this project. Our solar is designed, we try to design it to capture enough energy to run the refrigeration system for the entire year. So it it balances out the the power consumed by the refrigeration. This is a video, and I'm going to start it here. I think I'm going to start it here. This is a video that you might have seen before. We prepared it back when we started in this area for the Commerce 330. This is a bird's eye view, Fran's house is off to the left, continuing on to the west along North Slough. We have seven, seven buildings that have been built, that we have built on the south side of the slough, that's left-hand side of the of the picture. Each of these projects challenges us to be better, construct, use, and maintain each facility such that it is an asset to the employees who work there and to the city. We're more than well aware of the environmental sensitivity, not only this project, but all of North Slough from the Napa River to Highway 29 and beyond. For the last 20 years, we've worked with the city, the State Department of Fish and Wildlife, the State Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the Army Corps of Engineers, in the development and construction of these seven refrigerated wine storage warehouses, all that are very similar to the one that's proposed tonight. Working with our biologists in the city, we have enhanced the ecological resources along over 8,600 linear feet of North Slough and preserved over 37 acres of wetlands and riparian habitat for the benefit of the wildlife, the city, and the residents of the city. Along with creating initial wetlands and uplands, we've planted cover trees along the banks of the slough to shield smaller birds as they work their way up and down the slough so they are not exposed to marauding raptors from above. In addition, each of the bridges that we have constructed over North Slough free-spanner with the slough without impacting the abed and bank of the slough so that the wildlife can freely move up and down the slough without having to cross any of the roads above. You can note that the wildlife corridor is surrounded by the buildings in the Green Island Industrial Park, yet the wildlife flourishes there. This is truly the best kind of land that the city can have because it's a wildlife preserve that the city can enjoy it like a park because we see lots of lots of employees walking up and down the streets and around the area in their lunchtimes and their break times. It has no maintenance costs to the city, and yet it still pays pays full property taxes. I I think Mark would enjoy that one. We enhance the wetlands that we inherit, and we don't treat them as afterthoughts. There is a small, mostly linear seasonal wetland that is fed by water flowing from the land to the east of us on this project. We will not interrupt this water flow nor impede its outflow. Significant buffers around the wetland will be wildlife-friendly fenced and maintained as mandated by law in good science. Wildlife nibbling on our landscaping is always an issue. There are many deer, turkeys, cats, big and small, along the slough, and new plant material is always like candy for them. So the selection of plants that are on the city's approved plant material list and that can withstand the pressure from the animal population is an important function. Within a warming climate, it can take a year to get good roots in the ground, so good maintenance is necessary. As in the past projects, our consulting biologists will conduct nesting surveys in accordance with the prescribed mitigation measures and regulatory protocols prior to any work on the project site. At this time, I'd like to turn the podium over to Jana Wolagorski to continue with the presentation of the project and her discussion regarding the in-depth review process commonly referred to as CEQA.
Good evening. Just want to say what a sweet community you guys have here. That was really amazing to be present for. So my name's Jana Wolagorski. I'm with First Carbon Solutions, and First Carbon Solutions prepared the environmental review for this project, and I'm just here to give you an overview of the process and what was prepared. So a quick overview of CEQA, it's the California Environmental Quality Act. It applies to projects that require discretionary approval from state or local agencies. So that is you providing a discretionary approval for this project. You're the lead agency, and together with Sure. Together with William, he he's overseeing the preparation of the EIR. The EIR is the highest level of CEQA review. It's impartial information documents that provides mitigation for any impacts, and it allows for public comment and review of the potential impacts. So this is a quick overview of the general CEQA process and kind of goes step by step, and I'll show you, kind of talk about where we've been and where we are now. So we started back in October of 2023 with a notice of preparation. There was an scoping period where we accepted public comment on what should be looked at when we analyzed this project. We completed our analysis and published a draft EIR, which was circulated for 52 days, where the public again had a opportunity to comment on the analyses we prepared. We then prepared a response to comment, which is a final EIR, and together, the draft EIR and final EIR together represents the entire CEQA document. We then had a planning commission where this was recommended for approval, and now we here we are tonight, and we're looking for approval of the project and certification of the EIR. Here are the key draft EIR conclusions. Overall, we had less significant air quality impacts with the implementation of mitigation, less than significant GHG impacts, less than significant biological impacts with the implementation of mitigation, some of which Neil has recently mentioned. The project is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. For transportation, there is one significant unavoidable impact, and even after with the inclusion of mitigation, and that's in relation to VMT or vehicle miles traveled, and that is in relation to the change in regulations. This project is similar. This project is similar to the neighboring projects, however, because CEQA has switched how we look at impacted traffic, and the city has adopted a VMT analysis procedures. They fall into that significant and unavoidable impacts, even with mitigation. We do have mitigation that provides, that requires some transportation demand management to occur on site. However, that does not bring the VMT level low enough to be below threshold. And really, the only thing that could would be a public transportation system in the area or a relocation of this project. So because of that significant unavoidable impact, decision-makers are required to adopt a statement of overriding considerations as part of their findings of fact. We received several responses on the, public comments on the draft EIR. Two state agencies, two organizations, and three individuals commented. We prepared responses to all of those, which is available to you to review. And we also created an errata, which provides corrections that we made to the draft EIR. There were three minor areas of typographical errors or clarification that were made. And there's also a single appendix to the final EIR with showing support for our biological analysis and the approach to mitigation. We also have prepared a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And what that does is it takes every mitigation measure from the EIR and lays it out so that both the developer and the city can monitor and implement and check off those mitigations to make sure they occur. They include the air quality mitigation, multiple biological mitigation measures, as well as the mitigation measure for VMT as far as transportation demand management. And so the next steps, as I said, would be certification of the EIR and product approval. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm here for you. Thank you.
Get the mic on here. Thank you. Questions from council?
No, sir.
Not seeing any. This is a public hearing. At this point, then we will close public comment and have, sorry, public comment at this point in time. Thank you.
Are you going back?
Do you have anybody online?
I have a stack of cards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go on, you go, and then we'll call.
I just want to say that I think this is a great project that Neil's doing, and all the projects they've done in the past have always been excellent projects. I think it's great that he also, they take in consideration the wildlife and everything that they do. So I just want to thank Neil for all the projects he's done in the past, and good luck with this one.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Boginsky, and I have a few comments to make on this. First of all, you've got 240 pages of comments brought in by the Sierra Club, by wildlife biologists, by individuals. I read this. I hope you did too, because I had some pretty serious aha moments. One of the most considerable ones was the mitigations and the lack of response to many of the suggestions that were made by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife is very concerned about the cumulative impact of all of these warehouse builds and all these business park builds. This property is right on the other side of those eucalyptus trees that are along that wetlands edge park that everybody's so proud of. You can actually see the warehouses through the trees. I walked back there. I walked through the area. I walked through the forest. And yes, there's wildlife there, and I walked through there with Autobahn people just to look because I can't identify all the birds. Yes, the point is being made about those eucalyptus trees being non-native. The facilities on both sides of this build also are all being landscaped with non-native trees. So when you walk along that new warehouse that they built on the left, it's all non-native trees. If you walk along on the right, it's all non-native trees. So the point about it being a non-native tree is moot because that's what's being replanted. The other thing that was of my concern was I walked around that property, and I took photos because many of those trees are dead that haven't planted this last spring. And from what I can see, it's from lack of watering. A lot of the vegetation has also been died back. And I said, well, who's maintaining this? Who's making sure that it's watered and cared for? Because if you look on the warehouse to the left, almost all that vegetation is gone. I also asked about those three little wetlands on that property, and I said, who's responsible for maintaining them? California Department of Fish and Wildlife is responsible for maintaining them. So when they say it's going to be done in a legal way, that's the legal way, a CDFW. But that property, those wetlands, are going to be surrounded by cement because there's going to be trucks going in and out of there. So I said, how are you going to be able to protect wildlife from going to that property if they have to cross over cement where trucks are going in and out of? There's a lot of little details when you go out there, and you really walk it and see it. Now, the day I walked out there, the surveyors were out there, and they were already surveying the property. You know, there were already birds that have returned that were all over the place in the ground, and plants have already grown up. The last time we were there, it was a parking lot. It was being used as a parking lot for the cars on the two builds. I just want to say that there's a lot of detail. The Sierra Club has written a very good letter about their concerns. There's a lot of detail in this report. I can't go over all of it with you, but I'm really saying, really keep your eyes on this because sometimes what the details are, they're not always taken care of the way we think they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Janette Goyich from American Canyon.
Good evening.
And congratulations, mayor. Have a wonderful retirement. I just, I understand that at the October 24th Planning Commission meeting, the SDG Commerce Distribution Center project was approved for further development.
Excuse me for a moment. Can we increase the volume? Mic, please.
If you could put the mic closer to you or speak up a little bit.
Can you hear that?
It's a little better.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Could you not hear anything I said?
No, I heard you. I just, it's--
So I read the draft for the EIR, and it was perfectly clear to me that the report was deemed inadequate and flawed under the CEQA rules. According to the report, it is inadequate for so many reasons. The air quality, traffic congestion, health risks, noise pollution, endangered wildlife, and the nearby wetlands. According to the report, in the report by Dr. Sean Smallwood, "The impact on special species will be devastating." "Surrounding the area, according to special status and sensitive natural communities," was on page seven of the report, "are many endangered species of mammals, plants, fish, birds, amphibians, and reptiles. And the cumulative effect on construction will impact all these species." I do wonder if the Planning Commission read the same report I read. I simply cannot imagine, after reading the DEIR, that they would recommend further construction of the SDG Commerce Distribution Center. "At the meeting recently held for candidates for elections, several of the candidates admitted not much knowledge of climate concerns but were willing to learn from experts in the field. For me, here was the opportunity to take experts' advice and recommendations on environmental concerns. My hope is that the city council listen to those experts in the field of environment and act on behalf of the environment, which includes the endangered species, the plants, and the people living here." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Congratulations, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you.
I'm here to ask on behalf of, I'm sorry, I'm a business representative for Sheet Metal Workers Local 104, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the mechanical crafts. I'm here to ask that if this project is approved, that the city council adopt community benefits language for this specific plan and for the American Canyon general plan. I sent the mayor and the council an email this afternoon with examples of community benefits language that has been adopted in cities throughout the Bay Area. I hope you'll consider adopting similar language because it normally includes local hire, prevailing wage or area standard wages, and state-approved apprenticeship requirement language. The union construction trades make a great effort to reach out to the community and share the opportunity that a skilled union trade can offer, but in order to put these apprentices and skilled craftspersonal to work here in the city and county where they live, we need the work. Please don't continue the race to the bottom where wages and benefits in construction are concerned. Please raise standards on productivity, safety, local hire, environmental, and skilled craftsmanship on all projects, public and private, that get built in American Canyon. Please don't give developers a free pass to bring out-of-town, low-skilled, cheap labor to build projects in this community. Local skilled and trained hire will help alleviate gridlock, keep money in this community, and improve the quality of work on projects built here in American Canyon. Please help everyone to benefit from these projects, not just developers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Steve is the last name Brock. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Rick Hess. I've been down here developing in American Canyon since about 2000. Mark was the city manager at that time, and if Mark remembers what the eucalyptus grove was like back in those days, I challenge some of the comments that you've heard tonight. It's frustrating to me because back in those early days, you weren't even advised. The police even told you, don't go in there. That was, and Fran can even attest to that, that this was a radioactive site, basically. They had drug labs out there. In roughly, I think it was around 2004 or '05, the previous owners hired me to go out, and I walked the property with Napa County Environmental Health Department, with the environmental consultants, and we had pages of lists of 55-gallon drums that we had no idea what was in them, and there was hazardous waste over the entire site. The courts required the cleanup of that by the previous owners, which ultimately never happened. In about, I think it was around 2012, then the previous owner actually also hired us to go in and remove those eucalyptus trees because we had no idea what was buried underground. And we had to do, we removed, I don't know, maybe 1,000 eucalyptus trees, and we went through the whole process with the environmental consultant regarding bird nesting. It was quite a challenge to go through that process. That was also in addition to, I walked the property when we were subdividing it into the four lots with the, not the department, the Army Corps of Engineers and to identify where those wetlands were, and we went through the process of protecting what wetlands were on the site. The lineal, interesting, the lineal wetlands that currently is going through the proposed site was created when the city put the road through there, through the eucalyptus, when we were hauling dirt to cover up the dump site. And when they did that, it stopped the natural flow of water from the east going westerly, and there were some storm drain pipes that went under the road, and it was where that storm drain water was coming under the road that ultimately they determined created that wetlands. There was no, no longer could we do a sheet flow. So all of this concern about the wildlife, there was nothing living on that property when we got a hold of it back then. What SDG, and I have no involvement with SDG or the development of this project, it's just frustrating as a property owner and developer here for all these years that where was all this concern back when nobody could even walk into that site? We've done, what SDG has done now is they've cleaned that site up and made it something that the city can be proud of. 30 years is a testament that they've created wetlands, habitat corridors, and they've been stewards of the land. The idea--
Appreciate your comments.
Break here at time.
All right.
Thank you.
I strongly encourage you to look at the history of the property and the developer and approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, council. I don't come and say much to you guys or ask for much. It's degrading to me to be called cheap out-of-town. I don't know what that was, but that's not us. You know who we are. I can't promise we're the platinum level for corporate citizens, but I think we're pretty decent corporate citizens, and you got to take your hat off. I sold Neil and those guys the land. Rick's right, it was radioactive. Where were all these people when that was going on? Okay? We're not cheap. We don't take advantage of people. That's a bunch of malarkey. And to be honest, I'm sick of it. I urge you to approve this. Have you found a single environmental violation? Have you found a single fire code violation, construction violation? Bring some meat forward. Quit talking in broad generalities and say it like it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have no other speaker cards, and--
Any online?
There are no hands raised online.
All right, thank you. Last call, any other speakers? Seeing that, we'll close the public speaker, and we will return to council for further discussion and desired action.
Yeah. If there's no other--
Well, I have a couple of comments, yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
First, two areas of concern. One is the discussion about native plants for the landscaping. What, given our current plant lists, how much of that is native plants? How much of it can we make native plants? Because I do agree that we need to begin thinking in terms of native landscaping instead of, you know, stuff that may look pretty but might not be as indigenous. So I'd like to hear a little bit on what we're doing on native plants. That's my first concern.
Neil Thompson. I have to defer to Brett Cooper because it's the city's plant list, and to tell you the truth, I don't know. Truly around here, I don't know what is native. I mean, this is mostly grassland, you know, in its native state. I mean, that's what I saw 30 years ago. But I would have to defer to the planning department. But we'd be more than happy to change it if the plant list changed. Not a problem. That's not a problem.
Yeah, it seems as if there isn't any particular objection to doing it. We just need to say, do it, so--
Not at all.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the public. I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. The plant list that's been referred to is related to water conservation. So state law requires landscaping to be within a certain water budget to reduce water consumption for landscaping. And so obviously, native plants adapted to this climate would be water-conserving, but there are many other, perhaps more ornamental, hybridized, non-native plants that are also adapted to this climate. And so today, the regulations that we have, which are not uncommon, are focusing on plants that conserve water. It would take an ordinance change to require a higher percentage-- It would take an ordinance change to require a higher percentage of native plants. And there are unintended consequences with that. It would need to be evaluated. Obviously, if you were non-native plant, or rather, native plants are more expensive. They're, in some cases, more particular to the way they're planted, because in nature they land and grow. They don't necessarily lend well to a well-tended urban landscaping. So, there may be opportunities to increase it for more natives, but it is something that would require analysis and modification to our ordinance.
Given the current list, is there a way to focus on those water-conserving plants that are also native? In other words, is there a subset that you could work with the developer to at least increase the percentage of native plantings?
We may be confusing what we mean by list. For regular ornamental landscaping, the zoning requires, there isn't a list per se. It's the landscape architect that designs the plans, does a calculation looking at the types of plants that are proposed, and then the consumption of water they need, and then compares that with the water limits that the state law requires for ornamental landscaping. There are other lists for biotic mitigation in wetlands, and those are regulated through the state. So, that isn't something that the city would have rules for. But for those that are urban ornamental landscaping, we don't have a list per se.
Okay. Well, I guess my point in all of this is that we really need to begin looking at what kinds of plants we want to have. I appreciate the water conservation element, but I also think we need to start looking at native plants, and certainly the more we can work with the developer to see if we can't make any minor adjustments to the planning lists in the project to increase that, I think everyone would be happy over. So, I don't know if I want to formally modify the conditions, but I would certainly hope that we would all work towards that because it seems like everybody's on board, and that ought to be a powerful influence in getting things done. So that was my first area of concern, native plants. The second one relates to that community benefits. Can, you know, I know it's not part of the conditions, but could the developer talk to us about the type of, you know, where their crews are coming from, how much of it is local hire, how much of it is union wages? Just to let us know whether or not, you know, we're at least addressing it, even though we don't have a project labor agreement for private development, we do have it for us, but it'd be nice to hear from the developer how they're approaching those kinds of issues. Do they have an apprenticeship program and so forth?
Okay. And councilmember Joseph, I guess I'll turn that over to the applicant because what you're referring to are project features that are not contained in our ordinances, and so-
Right.
I'll let them come and describe that to you.
We'll let Mr. Thompson explain things.
We hire subcontractors. There's, other than supervision, we don't do any work ourselves. We used to, a long time ago. And we put the project out for bid to all comers and be more than happy to get the lists from anybody that would like to bid. Not a problem. We take bids from everybody, union or non-union. We don't, we don't say, "We'll only take non-union bids, we'll only take union bids." No, we award based on the best price, and we also look at quality of work and background and, you know, are they going to show up, and history, et cetera. But some of our crews come from, because, I mean, let's take for instance, the roof structure. In California today, and I'm going to go back 50 years, roof structures came in all kinds of fashions, et cetera, and there was, nothing was consolidated. There were many, many people that put up different kinds of roof structures for large warehouses. Today, I think there probably may be three in California. We use one of them because he does pretty much everything on the, in the western nine states. He happens to be union. We have no objection to that. Greatest friends of ours. That's okay. As a matter of fact, on this last project that we just completed, the 217, my calculation is somewhere around 54, 55% of that project was union labor. That's a fairly significant amount. Can't say that every trade was union, no, but we took bids from everyone. We'd be more than happy to take bids from everybody else, and you give me a list, and I'd be more than, give them a call, no problem.
And then the apprenticeship program, is that something you work with, or?
Most of the, I would say that 54% is, are the highly skilled trades, and they are, happen to be union, and they have apprenticeship programs. I would say the balance of that money is probably in trades that don't have apprenticeship, because they're not highly skilled trades. Chain link fence. What's the apprenticeship program for chain link fence? Probably isn't one that I know of. So what I'm saying is not everything falls into that bucket.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one comment on that. I think that's, appreciate the issue with the comments from a perspective of labor on it. For apprenticeship programs, you know, we have the sheet metal workers are over here in Fairfield, and the electrical workers are right here at the airport for apprenticeship program. I think it's critical that, as my comments with Central Labor Council, Napa Solano, it's workforce development, and to assure that you're going to have the quality of work, the quality of work we all want and need, you need to start getting more kids, young people interested in apprenticeship programs, so we have the skill set.
I have no argument with that. At all. Yeah, not at all.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other comment?
If there's no other comment, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, in view of some of the communications that have been involved in the record so far, I think it might be appropriate for ex parte disclosures by council members before the vote.
Sorry, Mr. Ross couldn't hear you.
Ex parte disclosures before the vote. If there have been any communications with the applicant-
Oh.
-prior to the vote.
I've had no ex parte conversation.
Nor have I, no.
None here.
I think I called one of the applicants asking if he was going to be here tonight because there was an unrelated matter, but outside of that, none. Thank you. Okay, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 2024, next in order. A Resolution One, certifying the final environmental impact report, SCH number 2023100842. Three, adopting the sequel findings of fact, or actually, that was two. Three, adopting a statement overriding consideration. And four, adopting a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the SDG Commerce 220 Distribution Center project located at 1055 Commerce Court, APN 058-030-069. File number PL23-0017.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. We'll move on now to our business, item 18.
There's like three resolutions on here.
There's a second resolution.
I'm sorry. Next resolution, please. And you're right, there is. We have multiple resolutions on here, right? Yeah, all right.
We have two.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order. Resolution One, certifying the final environmental impact report, SCH 2023100842. Two, adopting sequel findings of fact. Three, adopting a statement of overriding considerations. And four, adopting a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the SDG Commerce 220 Distribution Center project located at 1055 Commerce, APN 058-039-069, I mean, 030069. File number PL230017.
Pardon me, Vice Mayor Oro, that was, that resolution we just did, it's the second one that's-
Really? You could have stopped me like beforehand.
Conditional use permit.
Oh, wait, hold on.
Look at number 17.
Oh, was 17? What was 1.O. then? So, I thought Councilmember Washington did-
He did Resolution attachment one.
So, in my packet, there's an SDG Commerce 220 EIR resolution, there's a Resolution SDG 220 EIR, and then there's a SDG Commerce 220 CUP CC resolution.
It's that one. CP.
So are there, are two of them the same? There's two in my packet that are the same, so I was just going down that order.
Hello, everybody. This is William again. So the first resolution is the certification of the environmental impact report. The second one is the approval of the conditional use permit. So we've already had the first one about the EIR completed, we're just waiting on the CUP.
So what I'm saying is there are three resolutions in my packet, at least the ones that I have on my granicus.
Yep. Vice Mayor Oro, when we prepare the packet, the staff loads a Word version of the packet for us to add the numbers at a later time, and it's supposed to be marked hidden, and occasionally they mark it confidential instead of hidden. So it's coming up for you guys, but it doesn't come up for the general public because you have different permissions. So what you're seeing is two of the same resolution. One was submitted as a Word version.
Okay, so there's only two resolutions tonight, not three.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order. A Resolution approving the SDG Commerce 220 Distribution Center conditional use permit for development of a 219,834-square-foot wine warehouse on a 10.17-acre lot site located at 1055 Commerce Court, APN 058-030-069. File number PL23-0017, and that's all the resolutions I'm reading tonight.
And I will second that and thank Vice Mayor Oro for doing such a tremendous job of resolution reading.
Okay, we have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Okay, moving on now to our business items. Number 18, Melvin Road Sidewalk and Drainage Project, TR 24-0200. And I think we have a picture here of what we're talking about. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the community. Erica Almond Smith is Public Works Director. I'm here to bring to your attention the award of construction contract for the Melvin Road Sidewalk and Drainage Project. This is one of the American Rescue Plan Act projects that you authorized in March of 2022. What we're bringing to you tonight is the construction contract award. The reason why we're coming here not on consent is that the budget is so much greater than what was originally anticipated in March of 2022. We had refined numbers earlier this year. We didn't want to believe probably the engineer's estimate at the time, just because they're so much higher than what we've been getting in the years past, and the March numbers of 2022 were holding for the past couple of years, but this year, numbers have increased greatly. For instance, the stormwater was anticipated to be about half a million dollars three, two, almost two years, three years ago, and were doubled in this refined numbers from the engineer's estimate. The actual engineer's estimate, based on the refined and final design, was actually a little bit higher than what we actually got on our bidding schedule. So, this, as well as the next project that's coming to your attention for a contract award is the same way. The engineer's estimate, based on refined engineering and knowns in the field, were really close to what we got and received in bidders. And these projects were, this project was bid with the project labor agreement in place. We had quite a few bidders and pretty tight bids as well, and we would like to request authorization for contract award to Kierx Engineering. There is, I provided, instead of a vicinity map, was not included in our packets. I'm reminding staff that we need to do that on every project, as it familiarizes the community as well as council where these projects are taking place. Melvin, this is the sidewalk improvements on both sides of Melvin, connecting Cassier to Wilson Way and James Road, as well as a couple of sidewalk gap closures on James Road down to Donaldson on the east side of James Road. These were also identified as a safe routes to school, or safe routes to school sidewalk gap closures. In addition, our project included development conditions for Napa Cove. They designed the traffic improvements, including two speed humps and a raised crosswalk table, speed table, in front of the future and the current playground and tennis courts on Melvin Road. So, this project will include that. We've received $140,000 to date from the developers, part of their conditions for conditions of occupancy, and we've reimbursed them for the remainder amount. And with that, I open here for questions for you.
Thank you for that report.
It's something I've just been concerned with when she probably heard me to no end, about the safety for pedestrians. Safe route to school, you can get to Safeway Market Plaza there by foot. So you have your groceries, Starbucks, and now it's not on the side of the road. So thank you. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes. I too will appreciate that because when I'm walking to Safeway, now I'll have a sidewalk to walk on. But the other part is the drainage improvements. About where does the drainage installation start, or where will it be on the map?
It's going to be on the east side of Melvin Road. It's going to break about halfway. Part of the water already drains naturally north, so the water's going to drain towards the Rio de Mar ditch and go west, and then the rest will drain south towards James Road.
Okay.
And so that, right currently, we'll have, after probably the storms we're having this week, that's forecasted, there will be some pumping from Napa Cove that we get, we see chatter on Facebook, and we get complaints about. We try to keep that updated regularly, that that will no longer be an issue because they'll be able to pump or drain to the actual storm drainage underneath Melvin Road.
Okay, so at Napa Cove, it'll all drain south to James?
Correct.
And then anything north of Napa Cove, more or less, naturally drains to Melvin or to Cassier?
There's like an elevation. I think it's a little further north towards Poco, that the storm drainage line will go drain to the north.
Okay. Will there be storm drains there, or is it just naturally?
There'll be storm drain, that's why there's such a higher cost.
Okay, good. All right. More and more, I was a little confused on what all we were getting in this project, so, and we're not getting any new roads there, that's the only downside, but maybe near, near term, we'll get some.
We're in the process of applying for an MTC grant. As you know, we're prioritized for being affordable housing, and we're applying a letter of support, a letter of interest going to MTC. Before December 1st, we'll be requesting paving funding for Melvin, since we're doing all the traffic calming- all the, the traffic calming, the complete street aspects now.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Council ready for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Public comment on this matter is open.
I have, I have no speaker cards and no hands raised online.
Beth Marcus, I have one question, Erica. Does this also include the sewer? Because I know they came by and they marked the front of our houses with green marks for sewer, sewer lines?
We put a van next door on 64th and 66th, and two houses started on sewer backup. And they put a camera going down and they say there is a problem. That was about two months ago. So you guys need to look into it.
Matter is a sewer backup, is I hearing?
Yeah, James House, it's a pothead house. And vans had a camera go down and the city came out with a camera going.
Appreciate your comment, but nobody can hear it because you're not, you're not online. All right.
This project does not include sewer, but I can definitely follow up on that. Yes.
All right. Anything else from the public? Yes, please come to the podium.
Liz Donaldson, 64, Melvin. On the roads, I know you said that you were not going to tar them, but the holes are getting so big, especially towards, after Poco. I mean, I have to stop to get in my drive, not to go in a hole. And then I get people honking, people honking at me and driving around me. So it's turning into a really, quite an accident situation. So if you can take a look at that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, there's the resolution, council, if you're ready to take that action.
There's no other comments. I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order. Adopting a Resolution one, amending the FY 2425 capital budget and increasing the project budget from 986,230 to 2,731,830. Two, awarding a construction contract to Curx Engineering in the amount of 2,210,705. And three, authorizing the Public Works Director to approve and execute contract change orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget in conjunction with the Melvin Road Sidewalk and Drainage Project, number TR 24-0200.
I'll second that. Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council.
Looking forward to this project being completed. I think it's going to be a really good improvement for that neighborhood and for, through traffic as well. Maybe they'll learn to slow down. Okay, number 19, Knightsbridge Reconstruction and Water Main Improvement Project, TR 23-0100.
Yes, good evening again, Erica Almond Smithies. Here to request authorization to award the Knightsbridge Reconstruction and Water Main Improvements Project to, I just missed their name, ARB Incorporated. Again, this project was over the budget that was originally allocated and adopted in June by city council. And the good news here is that the prices were fairly consistent with what was originally, but the big, the big change here was the utility costs. The pavement stayed very similar to the 2022 cost. It's the, it's the utility work, the water, actual water main replacements and services that increased in this, in this item. So it's been adjusted accordingly. But again, the engineer's estimate based on refined numbers, the bids came in quite low or came just underneath it, but they were also really tight. I believe there's a typo on here, but they were, no, there's not a typo on here, but we were, it was not this project, sorry. There was one that was only a couple hundred dollars apart. No, it's not a couple hundred dollars apart. The, the first and second bidder were really close. Just, you don't get them in the hundreds of dollars difference. And the two little bidders, that just tells you you had a really good itemized project and a, and a good project that you have a lot of bidders come out to bid on this and that we're a good community to work with. So it'll be exciting to get these projects. This is the, the fifth, I think, or the fourth project out of five that were originally approved by council with the ARPA funds. The last one, which is the Rancho Del Mar project, will be coming in December. It's currently out to bid. So that will have all our projects under a contract prior to the deadline implemented by the federal government. So, and all these projects will be coming out at once, probably in the spring. So unless they can get started sooner.
Very good. I would assume we had a lot of issues with lakes, leakage for the, we're going to redo
This is a sewer, the water main?
Sewer and water main, yeah.
On Knightsbridge from Dan Rose to Elliot Drive.
So a reason for wanting to rebuild this thing or redo it is what, there's leaking?
It's old, old pipe. You know, Dan Rose, you've heard a lot of complaints. I think last, in the last three years, we've had issues at Dan Rose and the connection at Knightsbridge. So this should eliminate that as well as get all the courts completed along that stretch. And again, you have a vicinity map in front of you.
Yes. Right. Thank you. Other comment?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Joseph?
A quick question on, you talked about the, the estimates, although the engineer's estimates, the final engineer estimates were essentially right on based on the bidding, it was much more than when we originally thought. Any speculation, did the project labor agreement have any impact in that?
I hope not. It seems to be prior to this year, the project labor, our bids were coming in tight with our original engineer's estimates, even before refined engineering. It's three years after, almost three years since these estimates were originally came up with and, and we had inflation, so. Our other pavement projects, we haven't had much in utilities. It's like raising iron and minor service, service lines when it comes to water lines. So.
These two projects has had a lot of underground work?
Yes.
Okay, well.
Councilmember Joseph, one of the things that we think has occurred at these projects is during our budget process in the year, we're still relying on engineer estimates from a couple of years ago. And we haven't, as a part of a budget process, gone through and done a more updated engineering estimate because the designs of these projects are in various phases that don't always align with our budget process. So one of the things that we're thinking about doing in the 2526 CIP budget is actually annotate. And, you know, when we talk about these projects that are in there, to say the numbers that are in there are from a 2021 estimate rather than giving people the impression that we've updated the engineering estimates for the budget cycle, which we haven't, because it may not be convenient to do that from the middle of a design or whatever. We're not going to stop midway through a design just to give a, a partial estimate that doesn't always line up. And we think that was the case with these two particular projects, that there were 2021 budget estimates. And, and we don't think it's related to the, to the project labor agreement because the actual engineer's estimate, we, we do a very contemporary engineer's estimate before we go out to bid with the current market prices and everything else. And those will come in, like you said, pretty close. So we don't think it has much of anything to do with project labor agreements. It's more of what the 2021 numbers were from a 50% design or something.
How impractical would it be if we took those numbers and just applied the engineering record in, you know, the construction inflation rate and, and just noted that these still aren't final, they're just kind of budgetarily guesstimated?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a really great question. As we, I think as council's where we're bringing on a new position, a management analyst position in this department. And we think as we get into this next budget process, we're going to take some kind of a stab at that, having that person who'd be primarily working with the finance department on all things numbers and public works. So we, we think there would be a good role for them to go and figure out what was the most recent engineer's estimate. Is there a way we can do a sort of broad escalation, you know, without drilling into quantities necessarily? So these, these detailed estimates that we do before we go to bid are itemized, they're what form the bid, bid estimate with quantities and so forth. But if we're halfway through something, we can't necessarily go through and do an updated estimate at that point in time. But we should be able to at least do some, some more.
Like a 30,000-foot?
Yeah.
Estimate levels?
Yeah. So we're thinking about that.
At least gets us closer, so it's not as much of a sticker shock.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, great. That sounds good.
Thank you. Any other comment, council? Thank you.
Do we need public comment?
Anything for a public comment? No, we've had that already. Okay. Thank you much.
I have.
There's a resolution, is there a motion to accept?
Public comment?
Yes?
Public comment?
I have no speaker cards and no hands raised online for public comment.
We had the opportunity for public comment.
Right. And no one had any, so if there's no, any, any further comments, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order. Adopting a Resolution, number one, amending the FY 2425 capital budget and increasing the project budget from 1,712,538 to 2,539,438. Two, awarding a construction contract to ARB Incorporated in the amount of 2,35,773. And three, authorizing the Public Works Director to approve and execute contract change orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed the project budget in conjunction with the Knightsbridge Reconstruction and Water Main Improvements Project, number TR 23-0100.
And I'll second it. Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, management staff oral reports. Mr. Hawley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Director Akita has updates on, I imagine, community events and such.
What's happening in town?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a short one this week, but we still have some exciting things we want to announce. On November 28th and 29th, this is just a reminder that the city offices will be closed in observance of a city holiday. We hope you enjoy those holidays with your closest friends and family. And then on November 29th, there will be a blood drive, a non-perishable food drive, warm clothing and toy drive that is, that, in partnership with Kiwanis and provided by the American Canyon Community Church from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then lastly, please mark your calendars, we have magic of the season at Shenandoah Park. That is going to be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. This is where we have the holiday marketplace, which is provided by our very own American Canyon Chamber of Commerce. We have community performances provided by our classes and programs through our recreation department. And then we have yummy treats, so please come out and support. We have some fundraising opportunities with some of our nonprofits. And then lastly, a tree lighting at 6:30 PM. We hope to see you there.
And the date on that is?
That is, that is December 6th, Friday, December 6th, at Shenandoah Park from 5:00 to 8:00 PM.
All right.
Thank you.
Look forward to that. That's always a great time. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Hawley? Okay. Mayor, council comments, committee reports? Anything to report?
I have two more events to announce. After you had fun at magic season, the next morning at 12:07 is the reindeer run. And then later on that evening, at the multipurpose, or the multipurpose room of Napa Junction Community Center, the Art Foundation and the Phil Am Club is putting on the annual parole festival with help from a Napa County grant. So that's free and you should take advantage of it.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council members?
No, sir.
No? All right. Well, that, that will future agenda items. I have note.
There's a list at your dais, council, of the future agenda items.
All right. Okay, well.
One more to go.
I just ran, that's it. It's probably the last time I'm going to be raising this. I think I wore it out. Anyway, thank you all, council. It's been a great evening, everyone. I just, I'm really honored. And, and sometimes when you think the enormity of things, the impact we have, I just feel very humbled by that as well. It's just making for a better city and for the amenities in it, but taking care of people as well and their needs. So we got a great city here. It is absolutely awesome. And Fortune magazine was right, except for one thing. It's not just for retired people, it's for everybody. Number one. Thank you. We are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.